County Commission Meeting for March 5, 2013 to order. It will stand for a moment of silent reflection and then the pledge is led by Karen McGregor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to take action on the agenda in terms of withdrawing or adding something?
I'd love to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today I have placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, February 19, 2013. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $320,961.99. A request for road closure/traffic control for the David Mickelson Trail Marathon submitted by Ms. Emily Wheeler. To reappoint Mr. Paul Paulson to the Pennington County Weed and Pest Board for a second term. To schedule a public hearing on March 19, 2013 for Emergency Management Fund Supplement, SP 13-003. To schedule a public hearing on March 19, 2013 for General Fund Supplement, SP 13-005 for the Search and Rescue Budget. And finally, to approve the Adopt a Highway application for the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Weather Association for a two-mile stretch of Silver Mountain Road as submitted by the Highway Department.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the opportunity to recognize participants in the Adopt a Highway program.
Good morning. Hennies-Jungy, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. March is usually the month that we recognize all the organizations that go out and pick up trash and other materials that get put in county right-of-ways. We have 42 organizations in 2012 that done this. They adopted 94.3 miles of road, that they pick up trash and debris in the roadway. And we have, I believe, nine that said they'd be present today to accept their certificate of appreciation from Pennington County Commissioners. And Connie Berlato is the administrative assistant that does all the hard work. She does the maps, keeps tracks of them, makes sure they have their safety vest and other items that they need when they do this work. So, we appreciate their efforts and I will let Connie go ahead and present the certificates.
Thank you.
Good morning. The first group on our list is the 28th CPTS, who unfortunately called me yesterday and said they couldn't make it, so I'm going to just turn that one over. Next group, 28th MXS of Ellsworth Air Force Base.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
The next is the 28th Logistics Readiness Squadron.
Thank you. We appreciate your efforts.
The next is the 28th Security Forces Squadron. The 28th Security Forces Squadron S4. Cub Scout PAC 74. Ellsworth Air Force Base Group 56. Rapid Valley United Methodist Church. And Western Dakota Insurers.
We appreciate all their efforts and they help keep our area looking nice for all the tourists we bring into this region, so we appreciate their efforts.
We certainly do as well and we welcome you and thank you very much. Any other Commissioners wish to comment? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the budget discussion led by our County Auditor Julie Pearson.
Good morning, all. It is time to start the 2014 budget discussion. And with that, I sent the copy over. Holly, did you make them copies? Thank you. Because we're dealing with all new programs in the Auditor's office, which deals with pulling the information out from the Director of Equalizations' office, we've been working on trying to nail down the growth figure for the county, so I apologize that this information wasn't in your packet. We just got it late yesterday afternoon. I've sent you a memo. I've attached the analysis of all the funds. That, this is a required format that we do to make sure mostly just that Pennington County General Fund only has less than 40% reserves. That's the state law. But the county has put that basically premise toward looking at all the funds to see if you should use that money during the budgeting cycle. There was a mistake in emergency management, but most of that reserve is the Homeland Security money, which is very restricted on what you can spend it on. So that isn't a concern. The Title III Fund shows its negative balance. We know we're not going to be spending that entire budget. It shows on emergency disaster, the $80,000 that you've supplemented from, so it gives you a year-end balance. And there's reason there's not a percentage there, is we don't have a continual budget to, we don't plan a continual budgeting to figure a reserve off of. And of course, accumulated building, we use that to back up our bond payments. And when we repaid ourselves for the land that we purchased on Block 99, the next block over, we reimbursed accumulated building back for that, but it, all the balances have become part of the master plan, so that one doesn't concern me. County Fire is still relatively high. If you notice, the County Fair only has a $5,610 beginning balance, so we've had to freeze any expenditures to come out of that fund until first half of taxes come in, which will be in the May books. And I've noted that to Holly and she sent it to Ron Jeffries. So that's just basically what that looks like. The second form that I've attached is the analysis of the general fund cash flow. This is the one that is very important to us during budgeting so that we can keep our reserves estimates when we finalize a budget to the 20% goal that the Board has. The upper portion of that report shows actual undesignated reserves, unexpended budget percentages, and overcollected revenue percentages, and then of course, an average of the last three years that we use for projections and assumptions for the next budget year. It shows actual $2,012 amounts and actual percentages of collection. It shows your year-end balance of $8,008,77. That's net of reserves payables and the amount taken out for next year's budget, which is why the next line seems so much larger, is because we then detail out the specific reserves that you have set aside and applying the current year revenues and the current year budget will draw that down. We applied about $4 million, if I'm remembering correctly, to the 2013 budget. And of course, then showing an estimate, if we only collect what we say we're going to collect and we only spend what we're going to say we spend with the few exceptions noted there, we'll end 2013 with about 22.74%. The reason that differs from the report previously is this has that assumption section down on the bottom, and that's where I use those averages. So, along with that, then if you go back to the front page memo, it makes a little bit more sense than when we start dealing with how much more can we levy if the Board desires during what is available to the Board for additional tax revenue under the state statute without doing any opt-out for your 2014 budget cycle. We are still storing the 2012 Pay 2013 stored CPI of 3%, which will bring in, based off of last year's taxes, additional, it's a little bit over $1 million. The CPI has been declared for 2013 Pay 14, which is our 2014 budget, of 2.1% of $709,833. The growth of $149 million shows that, which the amount up in the growth in the actual paragraph was incorrect, actually shows 2.3% in growth of $777,436. So total available, if you chose as a Board to use all of those, and they're all available to you, would be $2.5 million. I would suggest the growth cannot be stored, so I would suggest you apply that first. CPIs can be stored for three years, so we've stored that for one. Use that next, and then that would apply to the 2013 Pay 2014 if you wanted to store that. You can use any or all of those amounts for budget discussions. That will be on the 19th agenda for the Board to start your budget discussions and your budget goals to be set. I won't be here for that meeting, I'm out of town, but also at that meeting, we are coming in with requests from different departments to reserve unspent overcollected revenues for 2014, and I just thought it was important that you have this information ahead of time so that you can start setting the priorities where you use that money. As you can see, we actually closed 2012 less than our 20%, but we're also projecting 2013 to be a little bit healthier for us and closing at above the 20%. You can either use that for budgeting in 2014, you can, any amount that you supplement from the budget from unreserved balances, of course lowers that, and you do do that during the course of the year, and that's exactly where these funds would come from. So, that's what information I have for you today. You can definitely set up what budget discussions you want, either today or about this, or set it up next week or next meeting, so that the people can, the department heads can kind of start going forward. The only information that we've received to date, and I requested that of Holly, is the departments that will be moving into the new administration building, what type of expenses that they would be responsible for within their own budget, and mostly with new furnishings and stuff like that. So we've got that direction, so we're just kind of looking at you. Of course, the biggest problem this year is going to be the wage scale. Frankly, you screwed it up last year by making a B column to every step that we have that wasn't half. So you have, you're going to have to either, you're going to have to really decide what you're going to do with the wage scale to get it back in place. If you give just a merit up to the next step, which then we could do away with the B or the second, the second mid-step between our steps, that would work. Or if you just give a cost of living across the whole thing, no merits, you know, we can do that. But that's a big decision that the Board needs to make, and of course, it's the largest part of the county's budget, is the salaries and the benefits matching. We also have to, are waiting on some direction from the Healthcare Trust Board on what is going to do, happen with premiums. And those are two big deciding factors before we can start going forward on our budgeting process that frankly spend most of the county's money on those aspects. So with that, if there's not any questions?
I do.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Maybe there's absolutely nothing we can do, but do you have any thoughts on what sequestration is going to do to us? Are we going to just continue the way we're going and if we don't get the money, we're not going to spend it? I'm assuming it's going to affect us somehow.
It is. I have a call in, I've got an email from our Bond Council, and you know, both on the BABS and the RZ bonds, they are paying a percent of the interest. And there may be a reduction in what they reimburse us for the interest, so we'll have to pick that up out of accumulated building, but it's not large amount. But I haven't got that for sure from Betsy yet, so that is one hit that I'm aware of. But if it's only like between 2% and 5%, you know, accumulated building can stand that for one year. Other than that, I'm not in tune enough with each department's revenue sources and how that's going to affect them. It may affect PILT. We get $1 million a year off of PILT. You know, frankly, they can't affect rural schools any more than they already have. You know, we, it's down to zero, we're figuring on that, so we're taking that hit this year. But I think that is a good question that needs to go out to all the departments to report back to the Board, what, when they submit their revenues, what revenues they're anticipating losing, so that we have a total of that, because it, you know, nothing direct. We don't get just a flat check from the federal government that now they say, but it's got to affect grants.
Oh, I think emergency management.
Yeah.
You don't think that's too big a question to ask all the departments, that what's this going to do to you?
I think we have to.
I do, too.
And we have to know that when we go into our budgeting, because it's all about the Board setting priorities for what money there is. There isn't enough money to run the county as it's being run right now, if we lose a lot. And they're the ones that should know it. And it might be a little bit too early, but if the sequestration takes off a flat 5%, they can tell us what that would be, so we're kind of prepared.
In the paper today, and of course, you know that everything you read in the paper is true.
That's true. It's like the Internet.
So, they said it looked like the House is trying to pass something that restores everything for the Defense Department, but leaves everything else in place. So, it looks like they're sitting in for the long haul, but I didn't think they were going to, but I don't know, no.
Well, I still think it's an important figure for us to have during budgeting. I don't know how you can set a budget for next year. You know, we, I think we have to go with what the information is we have right now, which is there will be reductions. And if we go along and the federal government said, oh yeah, now we're going to put this back in, then it goes back into the funds that specifically are reinstated and they can have additional funds. I just don't see how we can responsibly set a budget without making that a consideration. But I can't tell you how much it is.
No, I didn't think you probably, every department should know.
Every department should know. And you know, we'll go through all the funny monies that we get, like the PILT and the Secure Rural Funds Act and re-verify those. I know Nancy's been very helpful in getting information from Thune's office for me for that, so, but definitely.
Let's hope that the cuts do stay in place for the federal government's benefit. And I guess what I'd like to suggest is that when we ask the departments what impact that's going to have on them, or where it's going to, the amount of money they're going to lose, have them tell us where they can absorb that impact in the least effect upon the services that are being provided.
Absolutely.
And I think you can direct them at this meeting to start on that. I think we have to, before we can go very far to see how much money, if there's any, for wage increases, which will tell us what you're going to do with the scale, how much we need on Healthcare Trust and the matchings or the changes in programs on that. And we need the amount that we're going to lose and how they recommend losing that before I think we can sit down and figure out how many pens and pencils we need, because we might have to cut something completely.
Thank you.
Do you need a formal motion to direct, as you said, the departments to bring those numbers forward, or?
I would like that.
This conversation work?
No, I would like a motion so that it's clear that it's just not Julie doing this.
And in my mind, perhaps that would be more appropriately made at the next meeting.
Okay.
When we've thought through it, is that, and can structure our questions in a concise way.
Okay.
Okay?
Alrighty.
Any other comments or questions?
Just a question for you, Mr. Chair. Are you then thinking that at the next meeting, we'll talk about what we want to do with these CPI increases and growth figures, whether what we want to use or not use?
If we have enough information to intelligently apply those by next meeting, but if not, certainly we should be thinking about those as well, but I'm not sure how the sequence is going to flow, but sometimes we get to a point and we think we've gotten something and then we need more information. And so, certainly come to the next meeting with your thoughts in mind.
Sure. Well, it's just that, you know, if we ask, if ultimately we set some budget guidelines and ask the departments to put their budgets together, but yet we haven't made a decision on what we're going to use to support that budget, then they wind up putting what they think is a fair budget, because they're going to have this 2.5 million figure that Julie has provided us, and if they figure, geez, we're going to use all of that, and then they put a budget together and then a majority of the Board says, no, we're never going to, we're never going to pass that kind of a increase on to the taxpayers, then they have to go back and redo it. So, I guess for my part, I'll think about it, but I'd encourage everybody else to think about how much of this growth and CPI that we want to consider for 2014's budget.
Okay. Any other comments, Julie?
No.
Commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, let's see, is an item from the Auditor, 14A, Special Request for a Malt Beverage License.
Sorry. I thought I was done. This is a public hearing has been set for a special malt beverage retail license, and that hearing is to be held today. It's to be issued to the Rushmore Hockey Association. Location of the event, at the Rushmore Hockey Building at 5611 Old Folsom Road. The name of the event is End of the Rock Road Hockey Tournament, and it is requested for March 22nd, March 23rd, and March 24th, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. They're going to be drinking early. I think that's just the blatant timeframe that it's allowable. The Board, in their last revision of the liquor ordinance, we call it, you did raise your fees and we reset up an application. They have completed that and will pay the fee upon approval.
Is there anyone here representing the association want to come forward? In case there are any?
Eric Seifert.
Identify yourself, please.
Eric Seifert.
Okay. Do you have any comments for the Board, or do you, would you respond to questions?
I pretty much plan on responding to questions. I didn't bring up a prepared statement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did I, I think I talked to someone about this, and if I remember right, they said, this is more for adults than, it's not a kids' deal?
That's correct. The End of the Road Hockey Tournament is a tournament that's been hosted for 10 years now. It's an adult league hockey tournament that draws teams from Colorado, Wyoming, North Dakota, of course, South Dakota.
Okay, I wouldn't have been too crazy about it if it was for the kids.
No.
It's adults.
It's a fundraiser for Rushmore Hockey Association, but it's all adult league.
We'll put that in the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Emergency Management Public Education Campaign Award.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Dustin Willett, Director of Emergency Management. I'll start this really quick, just by saying, going back to Julie's conversation. Emergency Management is in a pretty unique position when it comes to federal grants and funding and budget. Our grant that we work off of, the EMPG, Emergency Management Performance Grant, is potentially on the chopping block. It is certainly not one of the protected grants, and I have not been able to get any definite information on how much of a hit that grant would take, if any, but the potential effects in Emergency Management are devastating. That grant pays for 50% of everything in Emergency Management, so we wouldn't even be able to make payroll if that grant went away. So, it'll be interesting to see if we get any.
But at least you wouldn't be able to make payroll at your current rate.
That's correct. That's correct. So there would be some pretty significant impacts to Emergency Management, and as I get more information, I'll certainly share it. As far as the Public Education Campaign Award, what I wanted to visit with you about today, primarily, I just wanted to publicly applaud the work of Alexa White in my office and in this campaign. One of the challenges we face in Emergency Management, one is how best to utilize taxpayers' dollars in our mission to increase the county's ability to mitigate, prepare, respond, and recover from disasters. And a huge part of that is community outreach, public outreach, and trying to push our message of preparation. What makes that really challenging in public safety is it's a very hard metric to measure. How do you measure preparedness? How do you know how many people have what level of preparedness and how do you know if your campaigns are reaching them and if you truly are improving the level of preparedness in the community? It's a very hard thing to measure. And so sometimes, our best gauge, our best metric to measure that is the response we get from the community, the very subjective people that come up and say, hey, we got that message and it was great, we liked seeing the billboards, we liked hearing the radio ads, we saw your commercial. And you know, we get a few of those, but obviously in a county of 100,000, it's an insignificant percentage, but it means that we're reaching at least some people enough that they're taking the time out of their day to respond to us and tell us that they appreciated it. So hopefully, that means that there's many others that got the message that didn't take time to tell us. Another thing that we use with that, and this was a first in my career so far, is receiving significant industry recognition for that award campaign. And what we did with the Addy Awards are the Black Hills Chapter of the American Advertising Federation, so it's the national, the largest national group of advertising professionals in the United States. This is a three-tiered competition. It starts locally, goes regionally, and then goes nationally, and they're graded on a set of criteria. And I just thought it was fantastic that our Being Prepared is Simple campaign that we completed last year was awarded a Silver Award at the local Addy Awards. So, again, it doesn't, there's no direct correlation, there's no, you know, we reached this many people and improved, you know, preparation or response capability in Pennington County by X percent. I can't give you those numbers. I can just say that Emergency Management is on more people's radar than it has been in the past. More people are talking about it. Our social media is better than it's ever been and we're and, and we're reaching quite a few people through various different media. So, hopefully, that translates into some improved measure of preparation. But truly, what I wanted to do was just take this chance, before you and before the public, to, to recognize the work that Alexa White and, and the rest of my staff did on this, this campaign. I just wanted to thank them. They did a fantastic job. So, thanks for your time.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Item 16A, abatement applications.
Good morning.
Morning.
You have three abatements. In short?
You are who?
I am Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. You have three abatements. The last one is a fire. The first two are mistakes from my office. The first one was a misplacement of an owner-occupied classification. The second one is, the second one is a building we had on the wrong parcel.
It wasn't that, it's, you had the, the building located on this piece of ground, but it really wasn't on that ground?
It, it's located on that piece of ground, but it's a, it was on the wrong tax parcel because the building and land are owned separately.
Okay, so somebody's paying the taxes on that building?
Yeah. We, we just, okay, maybe we had the building assessed in the wrong name, to the wrong person.
Mr. Chairman, I take it on the first one, he had two owner-occupied classifications?
Long story on that is, uh...
No, not the long story.
It's, it's not that long. Owner of the, owner of the house had owner-occupied classification on their house they lived in. They bought another house for the daughter mistakenly on the certificate of real estate value checked owner-occupied on it. Our office dropped it on theirs, put it on the new one. They told us of the mistake. We removed it from the new one, didn't put it back on the original.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant them.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to grant the abatements as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Highway Department, A, B, and C.
Good morning again.
Morning.
Heine Jungi, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. First item I have is our annual award recommendations. We open bids for our, our, some of our major projects, and our annual supplies we need for 2013. And I guess I'm ready to go through them. The first one is, is Asphalt Overlay Project AC 2013-1. This is some various roads out in the county. They're, they're rural roads. And a different method applies to an overlay on these. And the other one, some of the roads, this includes is Silver Mountain Road, South Side Drive, Dunn Road, and Pioneer Drive. We opened bid, Simon Contractors of, of Rapid City were the, was the low bidder in the amount of $536,219.40, and we would recommend award to that company.
That would be my motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion? If not, those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next project is Asphalt Overlay 2013-2. This is in the Rapid Valley area. We're milling and then putting an overlay back on some streets north of Twilight, off of Plateau Lane. The low bidder on that project was Simon Contractors of Rapid City in the amount of $182,025.70, and we recommend award to that company.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve that contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Next item is asphalt surface treatment. This is our chip seal, AST 2013. We're going to chip seal approximately 30 miles throughout the county. Hills Materials of Rapid City was, was the low bidder in the amount of $449,510.50, and we recommend award to that company.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the, that award. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next item is aggregate stockpile project, AGG 2013-1. This included two pits, an Eisenbrow pit, which is west and a little south of the wall, and the Shear pit, which is north of the wall. Low bidder on that project was KD Contractors of Hot Springs in the amount of $83,940, and we would recommend award to that company.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the award, and that's just for the, the Eisenbrow pit?
Eisenbrow and Shear.
Okay, but you only stated the amount of $83,040.
I'm sorry. Got the wrong dollar amount.
Yeah, you have two amounts.
Yes, I got to total them together. My mistake.
Nothing hurt yet.
We recommend the award to, to KD Contractors in amount of $213,140 for both pits.
So, I would amend my motion to include that amount.
Second, hang on, show a second.
You okay, Karen? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
We did have another aggregate stockpile request in the Longview area, and we did not receive any bids for that, for that project. Hopefully...
What, you're going to negotiate something with them, then?
Uh, we may in the future. There's a contractor working in that area right now. But they run into some concerns from FFA, that their stockpile was too high. They're in the fly zone. They're next to the airport, so...
Worried about an airplane running into a gravel stockpile?
So, they, they didn't want to bid because they didn't know if they could furnish it. So, they're trying to work out some kind of agreement with the FFA to allow a stockpile there, and hopefully, we'll be able to rebid that in the future. So, that's what happened there.
Okay, thank you.
The next project is asphalt surface crack sealing, Project ASC 2013. Low bid on that project was highway improvement of Sioux Falls, South Dakota in the amount of $98,903, and we would recommend award to that company.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to grant that award. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The next item is our annual supplies, and in the past, you've made a motion, one motion, awarding the annual supplies as, as we showed to you on the bid tabs. So, you could do all those with one motion, or if you want me to, I could go through each one separately.
You might elaborate on, again, on those that show no bid.
Oh, okay. Our annual supplies is aggregate materials out of the Rapid City area, the Hill City area. We did ask for Wasta and Creighton, but nobody bid on those. Asphalt maintenance materials, which is a hot mix and, and cold mix. Composite asphalt concrete, that's to a company that can do small overlays if we have a road that is breaking up, and we need to go out and repair three, four areas. That, that's what that bid is for. Concrete products, concrete pipe, bridge deck, corrugated metal pipe, that's steel culverts, cutback, any mouse-fed asphalt. That's what we use for chip sealing, deicing sand that we mix our salt with. Equipment rental, fencing, guard rail, magnesium chloride, seeding, and fertilizing timber bridge materials, and traffic control materials.
Do we have a motion?
Just a question for Heine first. Heine, on, on page seven, you've highlighted, I assume you've highlighted the ones you're going to award to, is that?
Yes.
And then, I, I see on the haul stuff, you got some bids, but you didn't, are you, are you going to award some of those, or what?
Yeah, typically, if we award, we typically do not hire the contractor to haul. I do list that, just in case we run into a situation where we need to have the, the supplier haul the material. We typically don't use it, but I like to have a price there in emergency, or if unforeseen circumstances. And I would award, the haul would basically go with, with the...
The contract.
Contract.
If, if you wanted to use it.
If we wanted to use it, yes.
So, you just need a motion to approve these materials?
Annual supplies as, as submitted.
That'd be my motion, then.
Okay.
And then auditor's office puts them all in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Next item is, we're asking authorization to advertise for bids for the reconstruction of Reservoir Road, Project 36, 326102, Prins 113, and Plateau Lane, Project 420427-2013. The Reservoir Road project is basically from Twilight Drive north to South Pit, or North Pitch. And the Plateau Lane project is from Twilight Drive south to Williams Street. The Reservoir Road projects of the 24 easements we needed to do the project, we've obtained all but two. And on the Plateau Lane, says we've obtained 11. Since then, I've had three more come in, so I'm farther ahead. These are all temporary easements. We're, we're building, reconstructing both roads within the existing right-of-way, except, in some cases, the sidewalk is within 12 inches of the property line, and we need to remove and replace the fence in order to get the forms in and get the proper drainage. So, all the easements are temporary. Also, the Reservoir Road project, we will be including a set of plans from Rapid Valley Water and Sanitation District. They're going to upgrade some of their sewer under Reservoir Road and some of their water lines. So, hopefully, I'll have it finalized at the next meeting in agreement between Rapid Valley Water and Pennington County to advertise both projects in the same letting, and, and then they're responsible for their part. I have that draft to Jay Alderman and Rapid Valley Water, and hopefully, we'll have that reviewed and back next week for signature. So, I won't advertise until I have that agreement with Rapid Valley Water, but I wanted to get the process started. So, what I need is a motion to advertise for bids for Reservoir Road reconstruction and Plateau Lane reconstruction.
Two separate motions?
I think you could combine them into one.
I'll move it.
Second.
Well, yeah, combine them into one would be fine. They're going to be separate projects, though.
Sure.
Yeah, they will be separate projects.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and does anyone need clarification of what we're authorizing? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Yes, I thought about putting them, having a total combination bid, but then, if you get one contractor, and then he won't be able to get it done in one season, so we're going to advertise it as two separate projects to hopefully get a better bid. Next item I have is authorization to enter into an agreement for engineering services. Due to the fact that we're doing both Plateau Lane and, and Reservoir Road at the same time, and Reservoir Road has a lot of underground sewer and water work. Sea Tech Engineering will be doing the inspection work for Rapid Valley Water and Sanitation District. They've done the plans on Reservoir Road, where we've done the plans on Plateau in-house. We're going to have both projects together, and, and my engineers are going to be busy with, with Plateau Lane. They're both going to be constructed at the same time. We felt it would be in our best interest if we retained Sea Tech Engineering to do the construction management on Reservoir Road. Their estimated cost at this time is $203,370. And we would like a motion authorizing the Highway Department to enter into an agreement with Sea Tech Engineering for engineering services on the Reservoir Road reconstruction project.
That would be my motion.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heine.
Heine, one question before you leave. You, you bid all this stuff. Obviously, you estimated it during your budgeting process. Did it come in better than you expected?
Oh, the estimates?
No, the bids on their materials.
Oh, yes. The, the material bid was, was the same as last year. The cost did not increase, so we were happy with that.
Okay, thanks.
In fact, I think one of them was just a little bit less, maybe 60 cents on the asphalt, so it worked out good. We were happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Item 18A from the Public Defender's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Tom Diggins with the Public Defender's Office. I did...
Pull, pull the microphone up a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's my first time before you, so I apologize if I...
We're pretty scary.
I did provide you with a memo. I have a few additional comments. I don't know if you have any questions regarding the request.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I did have a question, Tom. On the second page, under Supervision Received, it says that this person would report to an elected official. Is that supposed to be in there? It seems like this person would report to the head of the department.
Right. I, I haven't found exactly what you're referring to, but I suspect it's either a typographical error, or the jobs descriptions are used countywide.
Okay.
And so, it could apply to a department wherein the, the director is an elected official, or the head of the department, excuse me. In our office, of course, our director is appointed by the Public Defender Board, so that wouldn't apply. But this position, they would be supervised by the director and the assistant director.
So, we would really kind of eliminate that phrasing about an elected official? Do you know where I'm talking about, Nick? On the second page, under Supervision Received, it says that the person would...
I, I've found it now, thank you.
I, I didn't know if there was some requirement for that, but it just seems to me that would not be a good thing.
Right, and if you, if you refer to the phrase after that, it says, "or appointed head of the division."
Yeah, it seems like you wouldn't want the elected official in there at all.
Good morning. Nick Stroud, HR Director, Pennington County. I might be able to speak on that, and Dawn and I were actually just having a conversation. What we do is we're trying to keep as few job descriptions within the county as possible. And what you do is you, we would take a job description, and we would try to amend the parts that need to be amended for this. And the, the supervision received, that cannot, this position is also in your office, in the commission office, and it receives... and it receives supervision from an elected official. And in this case, it would receive supervision from a department head. And so we're kind of, we're keeping those generic as, so we don't have to create a different job description for every department we have in the county.
Or if we wanted to go down and tell them what to do.
Yeah, that's just what I was thinking, I can't believe you guys are doing that.
But it's, it's an elected official. We, I mean, we can change it, but then we're gonna have...
That means that I can go down there and run that office.
I would disagree with that.
Well, that's what it says.
So then, but, so we have, like, we have a staff assistant in eight different departments. Some departments are elected officials, some are appointed. So what we're trying to get away from is creating eight different job descriptions? We're trying to keep them as generic as possible, and I understand what you're saying.
But I'm thinking you guys are, if you're doing this, you're leaving yourself open.
So this person, when they're hired, reports to either an elected official or a department head. So in this case, it's going to report to a department head. In a different case, if this was to go in Janet's office or Julie's office, it would report to an elected official. We're trying to keep it generic as to avoid duplication of...
I think that can be misinterpreted.
And that's fine, and we can change that, but eventually we wanna get away from having a different job description from every department, when it's the same job.
And I get that, and that's fine, it's just that I'm thinking your description of what you want to say is different from what's written on this page.
But this person will report directly to an elected official or a department head. So in this one, we're saying it's a department head. In the next one we go to hire, it might be an elected official.
I have a suggestion if...
I mean, I'd be happy to change it, I just, that's where we get there.
I get what you're saying.
Right.
I think you're gonna, it's open for misinterpretation.
Okay.
Okay, let's get your suggestion.
My suggestion, you could just add some language. Reports to, directly to, an elected official if the department head is an elected official, or an appointed head of the division.
Or what you could do is leave it as is and put on the end, "as is appropriate."
We can do that.
Because I can see, I can see.
I've got an idea. I'm gonna make a motion to continue this until we get a director down there and let them figure out what they want for their office.
Second.
Not that it's a bad idea, I think it's a great idea. I know Ty did a marvelous job down there, and we probably need one, but...
Any further comments, or?
Well, I anticipated that the board may deem that more appropriate, and I have no problem with that at all. I think that when that position is filled, whoever fills that will agree that this is a way to better run our office, so.
I agree, and all we're doing really here is approving the job description as opposed to authorizing an FTE and hiring, we're not doing any of that, but I guess I'll stick by my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items from Weeden Past.
Morning, Scott Guffey, Pennington County, Weeden Past Director. This is a grant application for monies that haven't been allocated yet, but it's the $2 million in the HB 1050 that's going through legislation right now. It was supposed to be voted on on the Senate floor yesterday, but they, I didn't listen to testimony, but they must have ran out of time, so it was deferred to today at 2:00 Central, so. It came out Senate Committee 90. So far, there's only been one sending vote, and that was on the House floor. It was amended in the Senate appropriations, which was good for the counties. Backdates that county match, the two-to-one match to January 1, that we can start collecting towards that match. And we, last week at the Pine Beetle working group meeting, Nancy and I were there, and so was Ray Sowers, State Forester, Division Director for Resource Conservation Forestry. And all the counties were there, and we kind of came to agreement how we were gonna divvy out that $2 million. Pennington County, we stayed at $670,000. There was some adjustment between Custer and Meade County. Meade County dropped down, Custer County had $50,000, they bumped that up to $100,000. And then Lawrence County did bump up a little bit, too. We felt comfortable where we were at, considering the match and everything. Felt we were comfortable with what that match consisted of. So what I'm requesting today is authorization of the chairman's signature on this grant application, do you guys have a copy of that?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, we do.
So how did you come to these, to determine these numbers?
It was originally, when we met with the governor, the working group kind of put together what our needs were. And originally it was $250 million, or $2, $2.5 million. And the different counties went back, and we kind of looked at priority areas where we'd like to go in, and did some rough estimates. And then when it was dropped down to $2 million, we kind of adjusted those numbers down. So that's kind of where they came from, they're kind of a shot in the dark, but it's pretty, it'll be pretty close to what we did this year. It'll be actually a little bit of an increase, probably. By the time we're done with the right-of-ways, it's gonna be pretty close, because the total number is, calls for 24,000 trees to be cut, and we'll be close to that by the time we get done with our right-of-way stuff.
So Lawrence County has that much more to do than we do?
They're, according to the aerial survey, the rate of increase is greater in Lawrence County, so actually the migration's going north out of Pennington County into Lawrence County, so they actually got a greater rate of increase, so. It was felt by the working group that there was probably more of a need to get out ahead of the problem up there. Our problems, you know, the center of Hill City, Deerfield, that area has been pretty well kind of the epicenter right now. Well, it doesn't make a lot of sense to go in there right now. Makes more sense to get on the outlying areas and get ahead of the problem, so we're kind of looking at that. Front Range, 385 down to Rapid City, and then also the Wyoming line kind of form around there.
So on a two-to-one match, I take it that's two from the state?
Right.
We have to come up with $335,000.
But that can be in-kind.
Okay. And now, how long do we have to do that?
We have, from January 1 of this year till June 30 of 2014. So we can use like my time, Hiney's time, going out, doing the right-of-way stuff. There's a lot of ways where we can come up with the in-kind match. And then already the cash, so far this year, we've paid out about $86,000.
And we can use that?
Yep. So we should be good shape for getting the match. And then also, if we start getting into the project and we realize we were short some funds, and maybe Meade County still has too much, we can adjust those dollars to slide some dollars between counties. So that can also work.
Any other comments?
Just a comment, one of the things, I mean, you know, that's one of the advantages of the working group, is that we've met so much, and we all understand each other's concerns and needs and what's going on in our counties, and it was a, it was heartwarming, because sometimes you go into this discussion of who gets what funds, and you worry a little bit, but it was heartwarming to hear the county say, you know, we are not gonna be able to use that much money. This is what we can use, and so here's funding available. I mean, there was that type of conversation, so I'm pretty confident that if we need to adjust as we go, we will try to do that amicably.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the counties are working really close together on this working group, so.
The other thing that I want to say, and I'm just gonna refer back to what you said, Ron, we did last fall look at priority areas, and we have since received the current mapping of where the Mountain Pine Beetle has spread to. And we actually were, with the amount of information coming in now, pretty close last fall to what our guess was of priority areas to target. So, you know, when we did go to the governor's office, it was not quite sure yet, but it's been proven that we have, through the science, picked out the right areas to target and try and get a hold of the problem.
And it's not just the counties, it's foresters and state, we're all, you know, we all, we want to make sure we're using this fund as effective as possible, and efficient as possible, so.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the chair's signature on the application for grant money for Mountain Pine Beetle.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, to approve the signature, any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Scott. Next item is Holly.
What I have for you today is just a quick informational item. In order to save me some time, some funds, and increase transparency for some of our citizens, oh, since I've been here about three years now, I've tried to come up with a way to get our meetings online. I met resistance from our former IT director, and in working with Russ, our new IT director, I want to give him a huge thank you. He was able to get our commission meetings online, free of charge, for citizens and department heads to use as a resource. So he created a channel on YouTube, and we have loaded about a year's worth of our commission meetings online. They are available. Our recording policy will remain in effect, if anybody wants a hard copy of the DVD, but it will definitely save some time. So just wanted to make you aware of that item, and that's what we're gonna move forward with. Stand for any questions?
So you want to tell the public how to get to it?
I will do that. We have, basically they just go to YouTube, and they search for...
How to get to YouTube?
Oh!
What a YouTube dish.
People, though, don't know what YouTube is.
Russ Tinswell, IT Director for the county. We'll put a link on the website, right on the commissioner's page, where they get to the agendas and minutes, and we can probably do that later today. That link will take them right to where they need to go on YouTube.
That'll be one of them blue lines that you can...
Yes, one of those blue lines you click on.
Thank you.
All right, item B today is, I wanted to bring to your attention. Last year I brought to you our policy for renotice and vacancy and appointments to boards. At that time, I was not aware that there was a motion on the books from January 22 of 2008 to exclude the Weeden Pass Board from that policy. Russ, or, excuse me, not Russ, Scott Guffey brought that to my attention, and feels that it's important that we revisit this, as he's had a difficult time finding people to serve on that board. And I guess I would leave it up to the board for any questions, or to make a motion to amend that policy, to exclude the Weeden Pass Board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just, since Nancy made the, or seconded the motion, I guess I would just have a question. It appears to me, when I read that motion that was done in 2008, that it was, the term limit was waived to, for the purpose of reappointing Denny Mann for his third term, which doesn't necessarily exclude him from the two-year limitation, but allows, I mean, and I think we could do that in the future, too, if somebody, if we didn't get any other applicants, and you had a good applicant, then we could just make the same kind of a motion again, but still leave the policy in place, is what I was thinking. And was that your intent at the time?
You know, 2008. I do believe that that was what we were doing, and I don't, I understand that. We did that completely, I mean, all of the boards, that was the purpose last year of doing that. But I don't, is there anything within what we adopted last year that would keep us from waiving this? For, there shouldn't be.
Not to my knowledge, no.
I know it takes a lot of, the Weeden Passport people have a lot of information that they learn over that time period, so once they're trained...
And it would just be waiving number two on our policy for the maximum number of consecutive terms equals two.
But I think we could do that on an individual...
That's what Dawn said.
Individual basis, because you may get some other people that apply. I know, I know you said in your correspondence that you have a hard time getting people to serve on that, and I can appreciate if you're not getting good qualified candidates, then you would want to keep somebody on longer. And I stress the qualified ones, too, you know, because you can get some eight-balls that want to get on some of these boards.
Yeah, no, that, I think that would work for the Weeden Past. You know, it's hard, because you're doing enforcements against your neighbors, and it sometimes makes neighbor relations tense, so. That's why we kind of lack any applicants for it, but yeah, I think if we did a case-by-case basis, we could sure do it that way.
Well, I would inject here that as you look at the back of the front page, and we have a heading, and that was approved by the commission in 1990 and revised in 91. Then the Kirsten Troutman motion was made for the exception in 2008. And then this back of the first page was amended in 2012, which in my mind would eliminate the action that was taken in 2008. And an inexperienced reader using this for guidance, I think in part that's what Holly's trying to get out of, is having to look back all the time and find out, does it or does it not apply? Am I correct?
You're correct. And that's where we're at right now, is the Weeden Past is not, it has to follow the amended policy from 2012.
So if we added something in there that exceptions to any of these one through eight could be made on an individual basis, would that take care of you having to go back and reconstruct some of this historic stuff?
It could, you know, again, if we go out for advertisements and I don't get any bids, I'm gonna have to come back to you guys for permission to go out to advertise again anyway. So at that point in time, we could make the decision to have the exception from the policy.
Well, I'm sorry, I wouldn't think you'd have to go out and re-advertise again. If you advertise and you don't get anybody, and Scott tells his board members, "Go ahead and put your name in," even though you've been there longer, you've already been there two terms, and you don't get anybody else, and then it's pretty easy to take a look at it. And if, and if he gets his current member and somebody who is totally not qualified to be on there, then we can make the exception and point the other person, I would think. Or is that gonna create some problems, Jay?
No, I think it's your policy, and I understand why you have the eight criteria that are listed there, but I think you could do what you're saying, you could have, you could amend this to add an asterisk down below or anything that just says, "Subject to any exception approved by the, by motion of the board." So you could, on a case-by-case basis, you'd only have to look at the most recent policy to see that you have that authority to make that decision. You could do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Why exactly do we have term limits on the Weeden Pass Board, to start with?
Kind of policy.
There's no reason, it's just our policy.
Yeah.
Well, it's not just the Weeden Past.
It's all boards, appointed boards.
It's all county-appointed boards, committees, commissions? According to this.
Unless there's statute that specify which terms are allowed for that particular board, then statute trumps.
So if we use Jay's suggestion of making a notation in there that we could, we could make an exception to this policy on a case-by-case basis, then we could utilize that then on more than just the Weeden Past, if we had other ones that we didn't get any applicants for, and wouldn't have to go through a second advertising and all those kinds of things. and wouldn't have to go through a second advertising and all those kinds of things.
Jay? Jay, you, you looked like you were ready to...
I was just saying, you know, this is, you know, a policy is not an, an ordinance. I mean, it's, by definition, you can make that exception. Frankly, it doesn't even need to be in writing, but people like to have things in writing. So it's not difficult to put that exception in writing that on a case-by-case basis, you may by motion of the board approve an exception to this policy. But the truth of the matter is, you can do that anyway. It's your policy. You can change it whenever you want. But you put it in writing and that way it's just understood without question by anybody that reads it.
That would be my motion then to amend this policy with that, noting that exception that can be made by the board on a case-by-case basis.
Is there a second?
I was just going to say, I mean, I, I see Commissioner Buskrood's pondering the idea and, and you know, I, I can only assume that some people will think, well then, every committee, board, task force, whatever, we're always going to seek that exception to extend somebody's appointment beyond the two years or whatever. And will that open a can of worms of everybody wanting to do that? You could do that now. We're having a discussion about it now on the record, so it's maybe a little bit more out there, but you could do that now and, and I, I don't know. Sounds like the issue you're having is you'd like to be able to make exceptions when it really seems appropriate. So that would open it up to every committee, sure, but it's on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Do you wish to comment on the motion, Mr. Ferby?
Yes, I do, and thank you. That action would neuter your policy. So if you're going to neuter the policy, just eliminate the policy.
Anything further? Okay, any further discussion on the motion in a second? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Good morning again, Nick Stroud, HR Director, Pennington County. Holly and I are here today. This request is, was up in front of you last year and we pushed it off, so we're, now we're bringing it back. Both her and I have, in our working environment, have reached the point where we feel we need some administrative support. And due to budgetary and space concerns, we're actually asking to share a part-time benefited employee. We've listed some of the things that we feel this person can help us with on the, on the memo. My envision for this personally is that they would handle some of the day-to-day tasks that go with running an HR office and allow me to focus on some of the bigger items such as trainings and the handbook revision that Holly and I are doing and things of that nature. And I can let Holly speak on what her vision for this part-time person would be.
Basically, it's, it's what Nick said, is to provide some administrative support. Currently, my position has no backup in this county. There isn't anybody else that's trained to do what I do. Thank goodness I don't have a lot of demands on my time to be gone from the office, but again, it's, there are more, more items that we need to tackle that need dedicated staff time.
We have, we took the Assistant Two job description, excuse me, and we modified it for our purposes. This would kind of be the framework. If we get this approved, what we would go out for job advertisement for. Currently, we're, we're envisioning 30 hours a week. This is a grade 12 position with an approved starting salary somewhere between 1617 and 1682 per hour. If you use the formula that's used to kind of project costs, that's approximately 31,000 per year. And as you see on the last page, Holly has included the commission budgets for the past six years and the money that was turned back would, would cover that in all years except 2007. So eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, that position would be covered. As far as the space issue, we know that's a concern as we share the courthouse with the court systems and we know, we were envisioning using the commission office. We know it housed two desks at one time in the not-so-distant past and with some rearranging, we feel we could get a second desk back there. So we will, we have a motion that we would like to ask, but we would stand for questions.
Just a little question on your suggested motion or requested motion. The PTE, is that supposed to be a PTE or FTE?
And actually, that's a great question. It's actually supposed to be a PTB, a part-time benefited position. So that was a mistake on our part. I just conferred with KJ from the auditor's office and she said that's how it would, that would be best in her world.
Say, say that again.
The current employee handbook.
Yes, the, as the current handbook is written, there is a part-time benefited, which means they average over 20 hours a week and are eligible for our benefit package.
So it should be a PTB.
B, as in boy, yes.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't doubt that you probably could use one. You know, it's hard for us to sit here and know exactly what goes on in your offices and whether you need somebody or not. I'm just not sure that this is the right time to make a motion to approve it without looking at the budget nor where we're going on that. So I guess I'm not ready to vote yes on it, I know that.
In terms of what you said, are you reluctant to include the possibility of it in the budgeting process?
No, I don't think I'm against the possibility of it, no.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, if they're looking for a motion right now to approve it and put it in the next budget, I'm not ready to do that.
I guess I would, I would think that handling this during the next year's budget would probably be the most appropriate way to deal with it.
So in order to give them authority or guidance in, in bringing forward the budget, do we need any kind of action by this board at this time? Or are you comfortable?
Do you guys think you need a motion to, to incorporate this into your 2014 budget and present it to us during the budgeting process? And then we can, then we can really hammer out, because there's two things that would impact this. What do we, what, what's the 2014 budget going to look like overall for the whole county? And, and this position? I mean, you could, we could look at both of those scenarios. Right now, approving that without knowing how our 2013 budget is operating and, you know, with the potential cuts that are going to come into play in 2014, it, it makes it a little bit, bit difficult to just jump on it right now, in my view. So if you, do you feel comfortable or do you think you want a motion to say, "Go ahead and put it in for consideration in your 2014 budget"?
Well, we presented this during the 2013 budget cycle and we kind of, it just kind of fell through the cracks. So we kind of feel like we may be just kicking the can further down the road. So we were looking for more clear direction at this point in time.
Well, again, I guess I would say that to, to get this approved in the 2014 budget is really going to hinge upon what we have, what we have to spend in 2014 and, and the justification for the position. I, I mean, I, I think, I don't have, I, I don't have difficulty in accepting the fact that you both could use some clerical support. But whether or not we have the money to cover this part-time position, if, if in fact, when we get to the 2014 budget, we might be cutting some other positions. Because then, then I think you start weighing it. You say, what's more important to the function of county government? Part-time employee for human resources and county commission? Or keeping somebody in one of the other functions of county government?
And I have a question, I guess. If the, we go through the budgeting process and it is approved in the 2014, would you be open to us coming back then in this year? If we thought this year's bud, 2013 budget was shaping up to where we would have the money and it's approved in 14, would it, would you be open to us coming back in 2013 asking to hire maybe towards the middle or end of the year?
I, I think you would have a better argument on your part, especially if you could show, here's, here's, here's the money that's going to be left over in the county commission budget. Here's the money that's going to be left over in the human resource budget. Now, if you think, well, the sheriff's going to have some left over in these jail budgets, so we want to hire this early, then that probably wouldn't fly. But if, if you guys think, you know, in, in August or September, October, you would have that enough money to cover this through the end of the year, then you could do it, we could, we could discuss it and potentially say, "Go ahead and hire early."
Okay. Well, then I don't know if we've ever needed a motion to go ahead and try to put something in our budget for discussion. I mean, that's all the, the beginning budgeting process is, is we just give it a shot and you guys tell us yes or no. So I don't, I don't feel we need a motion for that, but I'm not the expert.
I can agree that you don't need a motion to direct him to include it in his 2014 budget plan.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Items from the chair and today I would comment on the last TIF meeting, at which I voted no, but I did have one more no vote, so I'm gaining. The, the TIF meeting dealt with amending TIF number 65. And there were a number of things in the packet that we received a couple of days ahead of time, including a kind of a summary of the history of that TIF. And back in, in the early years of its being developed, there were like four meetings prior to it being brought forward of the TIF committee. And I asked why they had that many meetings. And then here at this point in time of our current meeting, we were just handed the packet a couple of days ahead of time and expected to make a decision. There are many elements in that TIF that I raised questions about. And because of this, I'm commenting at this time to put you in mind of the situation and proposing that we have an item on our agenda next meeting that would explore it a little further and possibly position us to take a stand, a public stand on that TIF. And if you wish to pursue it in that manner, then we'll go ahead and have Holly put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm all in favor of that. We're, we're not getting anywhere with, with our objections to TIFs and not even the objections to TIFs, just the, can we have a voice in them? Because we paid two and a half times what the city does for them and they don't seem to be... The mayor was willing to really take a look at it. I was at the legal finance committee meeting and they hemmed and hawed around and, and were misinformed basically. But it did get a, an approval there to go to the council. But it's really not, even if it gets approved, the way it's structured now, it's not going to make any difference. And of course, you got to realize too that the TIF committee that Lindell sits on votes on it. But really then, that's just a recommendation to the planning commission. That makes a recommendation to the city council. So it's, it goes down this whole long pipe. So I, we've got to do something different. So I would agree with Lindell, let's get it out in the open.
Well, and, and probably, and probably that's what we need to do on each of these TIFs that we oppose, is do it more publicly. Not that the, that TIF committee isn't a public meeting, but, but frankly, I don't think the public actually understands how this impacts Pennington County and the fact that we don't, I mean, we have a vote on it three levels down from the decision and we only have one vote and I don't know how many people's on that TIF committee.
There's seven or eight, I think, or nine, but...
About one-ninth of a vote, three levels down, so it's not much of a vote. And, and so, you know, I don't think the public understands that, what's going on with that.
Mr. Chair, one thing that I really think would be important, at least, it's not that you're always against a TIF as, as county commissioners, but at least the public needs to understand the financial impact every time a TIF is changed or issued. And they don't have that information and I'm not even sure the other folks on the committee understand that. And so if we brought it to our county commission meeting and had that information available, that would be beneficial to the public. And I, I think they should be informed.
Of course, it's kind of hard for the chairman to bring it to us when he gets the packet of information three days before their meeting.
Well, and, and that was one of the points that, that I raised when I questioned the previous meetings. I guess I was curious as to what had changed in terms of the function of the committee and its opportunity to understand completely the dynamics of the whole thing. And in, during the time that I've been back, been on the commission and I've been on the TIF committee and we have never done anything but get a packet and have a meeting and pass it. And in the course of this last meeting, I did state that with all the fancy and clever financing mechanisms that have been created in the United States in the last few years, that a TIF which interferes with the collection and distribution of tax money, property tax money, is the most convoluted form I can think of. And we frankly ought to do away with them completely. So if there's any further comments, we'll plan to include it on the next agenda. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Buskrood to join me at the next planning meeting for the city, at which time this will be taken up. Okay, we're 10:30. Planning and zoning has center stage. We do need to move into a board of adjustment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Dan?
Good morning, Dan Jenison, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request by Jerry Hamm request to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 3.75 acres in a general ag district. If the county board of adjustment approves the variance request to reduce the lot size, we would suggest that five conditions be attached. It's located 14 miles east of Rapid City and one-half mile south of East Highway 44 near Farmingdale and is currently part of a 315.8 acre, or point acre... near Farmingdale, and it's currently part of a 315.8 acre, or point acre parcel, zone general ag district. He's to create a lot for his daughter, who would like to build a house on this currently vacant piece of property, on the 3.75 acres currently vacant. Surrounding area consists of agricultural and residential uses, lots ranging from three acres to approximately 300 acres. There is a nearby three-acre lot that was approved through a lot size variance back in '03 for a member of the family on this same area. They are going to describe the property by elocut portion. They don't have to plot it, and they, they have already, or Ken do that, and just file a deed with registered deeds. Zoning ordinance does allow an additional permit for ranch-hand residents in this area. However, they, he would like to create this lot just because of financing purposes, and she would like to own a piece of land in this area. If you recommend approval, we'd recommend that five conditions be attached. There is some question in regards to access to the property. If it does cross another parcel, they would have to create an easement. The area is owned by the same person who owns this land, and they could just file and record that with registered deeds. Of course, that easement would have to meet our current zoning ordinance of a 40-foot wide access easement to the parcel.
Have you discussed with the applicant continuing this for a couple of weeks?
Have I discussed it with them?
Knowing my feelings on variances?
Oh.
Amount of people sitting at this board today?
I did, and I was not aware Ken was going to be absent until just now when I walked up, so we can certainly...
I don't know how I'm going to vote on it.
Oh, okay.
But there was a kind of a major shift in your point of view last meeting, wasn't there?
No. I'm going to take, make a motion, take a 10-minute recess, I have some other business to attend to, and you might want to discuss it with them.
Certainly could.
Second.
Motion in a second, I think we should have a roll call vote on... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Dan, you're, you're in business.
Sorry. So while staff is stating that if you approve this variance request, we'd request that these four or five conditions be added. They get an approach permit from the county highway department, all drainage concerns be addressed, excess easement be dedicated and recorded at registered deeds if necessary, and if they do any work within the floodplain, that they get a floodplain development permit, and an address be posted so it is visible from both directions off of Hammerquist Road in accordance with ordinance number 20.
Any other questions or comments by the commission? Are there any black-footed ferrets on that land?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the variance.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the variance. Any further discussion?
With those five conditions?
With, the motion does include the five conditions. Okay, do we need a roll call vote? Proceed with the roll call, please.
Busker?
Aye.
Davis, here, then Holloway?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried. Now we need to come out of a board of adjustment.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to come out of the board of adjustment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, Water Protection Coordinator. I'm just requesting that the board approve the chairman's signature on the 2012 annual MS4 stormwater report, so I can submit that to DE and R.
I'd like to approve the chairman's signature on the report for 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, discussion. What, what area does this report cover?
It covers what the Census Bureau considers an urbanized area in Pennington County. Those areas are determined by 1,000 persons per square mile. There's areas in Rapid Valley, Green Valley, Colonial Pine Hills, and an area along Universal Drive. They're considered our MS4.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have, have a motion in a second? Any further discussion?
I don't have any discussion. I do have a question. Does MS4 include Hill City?
No, not at this time.
Then I have a follow-up question. The stormwater plan that was advertised in, I believe it was 2010, as part of the Spring Creek 319 project, which Hill City is the ground zero of, then how would that interface, that stormwater plan interface with this stormwater plan?
This one, or it doesn't, essentially. The MS4 is a MPDES permit that's issued to Pennington County by DE and R. So we have to follow that, the guidelines in that MPDES permit. They determine what is basically an urbanized area, and those areas that I have are the ones that they consider urbanized, so those, the ones that fall under the MS4. If he has questions about why Hill City is or isn't in the MS4, that's a question for DE and R.
Well, my, whatever you call it, logic says that they're both on different drainages, and why would they interface?
Because they're both in Pennington County. They're all in Pennington County. That's why they should interface. There should be one plan for the county. At least, at least the county should have a plan with subordinate elements.
Okay, are you done?
Once again, my question wasn't answered. Why isn't, or what is the interface between the plan that supposedly was drawn up for the Spring Creek drainage, which Hill City is ground zero of, and the county? Once again, the plan that is being presented, as I understand it, to the state DNR is a Pennington County plan. That was my question, it wasn't answered, thank you.
Okay. We have, any other questions? We do have a motion in a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Item C.
On the approval of the updated stormwater management plan, I'm just requesting that the board approve the updated stormwater management plan for the county. This has goals for 2013 to meet our MPDES requirements. So I'm just asking that the board approve it so we can move forward with these goals and post the stormwater plan on the website.
I would have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What's different with this one than the prior one, prior plan?
Every year, we update them with the new goals that we have to meet our MPDES permit. We did have an audit early in September, or late September 2012, so this reflects some of the suggestions from that audit.
You know what those changes are? Which specific changes were made in, in the plan?
Some of them were just more clearly defining our goals of what we're going to accomplish. Another one was updating some of these maps. They wanted a, a better mapping system, but we, in our corrective action, had suggested to them that we wouldn't have those available till June. That's in one of the appendices. They wanted a little bit more public outreach, so some of those goals are in there. Some more clarity on site inspections, checklists and things. So those are included in the appendices in these plans, which weren't in there prior.
You know, when, and I looked this over, but it's hard to pick out unless you get the other plan and lay it side by side and go page by page, it's always hard to find what's changed in it. And, and so when you bring these in, it'd be nice if we knew what sections were changed, and what part of that section was changed.
Okay.
Otherwise, you kind of, you're proving these things in the blind.
Sure. The biggest thing is when they had requested, as far as putting together the plan, they wanted a little bit more detail. So we broke out kind of what we did at the previous years, this background and organization ordinances that may apply, management and responsibility, that first part is all new. There was a small background in the other one, but that basically is new. Under each of the minimum control measures, we have basically what we've done as current programs, what we intend to do, and then in the tables, we have what our goals are for future. The appendices are new, essentially. It lists the areas, the urbanized areas. What is also new is the illicit discharge and elimination plan. That was, that is new, it's appendix G. The construction permit procedure and application is the same, but we actually put it in the plan.
So does this need to be approved today?
Does it need to be? I mean, if you need more time or have questions, or you want me to show what's different, I can certainly do that.
That's, that's the part that's got me a little perplexed on this, is that obviously you know what's been changed in here, but we don't know what's been changed in here. And when you run through it here in five minutes, and then want us to vote on it, it just doesn't seem like we're getting, or at least I'm getting myself very well informed on it. So I'd like to see, see something highlighted or noted in a, in an attachment or something that would say, here's the pages that were changed, and here's what was changed on those.
Okay.
Or here's what was added to it.
So we can continue it till the next meeting, and I can highlight all the changes? What was previous and what's new?
That would be good as far as I'm concerned, though, although I'm just one person, so...
I, I agree with that, and I think anytime we have policy changes or something, it would be nice if, if staff would do that. That'd be very helpful.
So let's have a motion to effect.
I'm going to continue this to the March, is it 19th meeting? Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to move this to the March 19th meeting with the request to highlight some of the information. Any further discussion on the motion? On the motion?
I'd like to add to what, and I concur with what Don was saying, it's, I tried to digest some of this here in the last five, 10 minutes, but I'd like to know what, and I read to hear several places, dry weather discharge, illicit discharge. And obviously, that prompts a question, and one of these days, we might have some wet weather. So, so I'd like to know what, what the plan talks about for wet weather illicit discharges. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Item D.
Item D is an appeal of a conditional use permit, 13-02, Dan Pulse being the applicant. This was heard at the last planning commission meeting, there was a lot of the discussion. It is a CUP to allow for a bicycle rental and shuttle service as a home occupation in the Loudoun residential district. The applicant being a Dan and Linda Pulse, located at 12271 Deerfield Road, approximately two miles northwest of Hill City on Deerfield Road, and includes a 1.66 acre parcel. Is included bicycle shop, shuttle service for the Mickelson Trail. The property is located right along the Mickelson Trail. He indicated the business will consist of approximately 100 shuttle rides a year to and from the property to different trailheads along the Mickelson Trail, and will average approximately 415 passengers annually. He indicated the business will be operated by himself and his wife and son, and no outside employees. Activity on the property will consist of a parking area, bicycle rental area, storage buildings, and shuttle bus. Two of the buildings will be used for the bicycle storage and maintenance. The log cabin, a kind of a storage-looking building, is going to be used as the office to check in and work with the applicants, and then, or not at, the riders. And then also, his house will be the main office for his record keeping. No customers will be going to the house on the property. It is located across the road from the Mickelson Trail. He has worked with the Forest Service, because there is Forest Service land between his property and the Mickelson Trail, and Deerfield Road is also in between the properties. He's worked with the Forest Service to acquire the right to build a trail up to Loudoun Mountain Trail, or Road, that is right across, directly across from this, and then have people crossing Deerfield Road onto the trail itself. Most of his clients will be using the shuttle service to and from the property, and he'll be bus, or shuttling them to other trailheads along the Mickelson Trail. This certainly could have an effect, because he is going to have parking on the property, people coming and going from the property. It isn't typical of a home occupation, but I do believe it is something that could be a conditional use permit on the property. However, because it doesn't fit the home occupation, staff did recommend denial of it. After reviewing it with the planning commission, though, they felt it was a use that is compatible or could be compatible with the area, given the low impact, and they recommended approval of the CUP with some, 13 conditions. They did make a change. One of the changes was, was that the holding tank, or the pit privy on the property, had to be pumped and serviced prior to operation. Staff had it prior to approval, they changed it just prior to operation of the business on the property. That was condition number nine.
Do you have a map, Dan?
Sure.
Get some pictures.
This is Forest Service all the way around on this side. Here's Loudoun Mountain Trail. The, the trail he's been given permission to build would be from the property across this, and then directly to Loudoun Mountain Trail, where Mickelson Trail is right in this area, right across Deerfield Road. High Country Guest Ranch is about in this area, right in here. This is an area set up for residential structures, but also allowed to have vacation home rentals on the property through the PUD. This also allows for vacation home rentals. This is a PUD that was set up about probably 10 years ago for vacation home rentals. High Country Guest Ranch also allows for vacation home rentals, and as of just about six, or four, about three or four months ago, High Country Guest Ranch was given permission to have outdoor concerts on the property. So there are a number of commercial areas, commercial-type uses in the area, mainly High Country Guest Ranch, but vacation home rentals are all the way around it. This area does have mostly, I guess, most of the people live... This area does have mostly, I guess most of the people living there do not use it as vacation rentals, but are allowed to do so if they like.
What's the yellow?
Yellow is Low Density Residential District, which is three acre lots or larger. This lot is less than three acres, however, it was created prior to 1994, is considered a legal non-conforming lot.
So Dan, we, we do have an official agreement signed with the Forest Service?
Yes.
Because it, it didn't look like it in the letter that we received, or the email received.
I'm a licensed outfitter. Would you come forward, sir? Come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself.
I'm Dan Pulse, applicant, and they, what they said at the Forest Service when I visited with them, and then they also, I think they sent an email and a letter to Dan, was that they were going to add this access thing to my outfitter permit. High Country Guest Ranch has horse trail rides, and that's how they did that. They granted them an access across Deerfield Road, and then they, wherever they go with their horse rides. And so they were going to model mine after that, and, but instead of horses, it would be the bicycles, and I have to build a trail to their specifications and grow it, and have to put up the stop signs, and, you know, whatever is required from them, but they have approved it all the way to the top. It has been approved, excuse me, at the Forest Service, and the same with the game fishing parks has approved it. And I think all county departments reviewed it, highway department, there was no issues. They do have to cross Deerfield Road, which, that's not an ideal situation, but there's an S curve there that for the last 12 years or so, bikes were crossing Deerfield Road there. Now there's a tunnel underneath the road, which is a good thing, and probably six bikes, eight bikes a day is what I would be having cross Deerfield Road, because most of what we do is take folks up to Dumont, and then they ride back to Hill City. And, so most of what I'm going to be doing is going to be off premises, and I know this because I've been running this business out of town since 2005. But it's just not economically feasible to lease land in Hill City for 12 months, for two and a half months of, of the actual active business. It's, we get busy from about the 10th of June until rally time, and then from rally time until Labor Day, there's very little, if any, business. And then in September, we get a lot of couples that come out and ride the trail. And mostly that is people that are riding from Deadwood to Edgemont, and we just service them along the way, whatever they need, move their cars, or move them back to their cars, whatever they need. And actually, that would also be off premises.
Any other comments or questions?
I had a few.
Go ahead.
So, I, I guess, kind of in the past, we've, we've required that, that if they had that easement, that we had some documentation, and we don't really have.
You have, all you have probably is the same thing I have from the Forest Service.
The email.
Yes.
Well, I'm sure I can get it, you know, they just, they can just, what they say is they're going to add it to my outfitters permit if it gets approved.
Which I'm fine with, but.
Just to get a copy of it.
I would have to get that from them, but that shouldn't be a problem, because.
I, I think it's important that we have that on record, since this is something that.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem, because they're all in favor of it.
The, the other thing I heard you say was the stop signs. Are you saying stop signs that are on the trail, or stop signs that are on the highway?
Well, whatever they require, whatever signs a game fishing parks requires, as they cross the road, and I don't even know what they have at Dumont.
You're saying stop signs on Deerfield Road for traffic, or for the bicyclists?
No, we're not going to interfere with Deerfield Road traffic. It would be, I don't know if you're familiar with the Dumont Trailhead?
No, I'm not.
Anyway, it's going to be just almost identical to the Dumont Trailhead, up there, it crosses North Rochford Road, and I'm not sure if they have a yield sign or a stop sign, but whatever.
For the bicyclists, not traffic.
Yeah, yeah, does not interfere with the traffic on Deerfield Road, other than, you know, they're going to have to watch for bicyclists, but most bicycle people that I've encountered are, are conscientious, and they're gonna, not going to be riding in front of trucks or cars, or.
I, I guess I am quite concerned about safety. I just, that's probably my number one stumbling block, is, is going across Deerfield Road, and it can be real busy, and I know you say it's only a few bicycles crossing it, but if, if you're a good businessman, you're going to want to have more than a few, you're going to want to increase that. And so I, it might be a few now, but what if it gets to be a problem? And I guess that's, that is a concern for me, and I, I would look forward to hearing your thoughts. The other thing I am going to mention, too, the envi, the environmental planner, Dan, if you look at their comments, the third comment says that if they are to hire employees outside of the family, that the onsite wastewater treatment system should be reviewed and, and approved by the South Dakota Department of Environmental Natural Resources. In number three on your conditions, it seems like that should reflect what the environmental planner said. It doesn't at all, and it just says that there is no more than one additional employee. Well, I can see what you're trying to say there, but it seems like they're related. If, if they hire an additional employee, they're going to need to go through D E N R.
We could certainly add that as an additional condition, to say that if any additional employees outside of the family get hired, that the septic system be reviewed and approved by D E N R.
It would, would certainly deal with what your comments were.
Mr. Chairman.
But anyway, the safety thing for me is the big thing.
Dan, is this, this isn't a home occupation, like, it seems like that's what was discussed at Planning and Zoning Commission.
It isn't a typical home occupation.
No, it isn't a home occupation.
No, it, it really isn't. It comes down to, it's more, if you looked at section 204F of our zoning ordinance, it does allow, even in, under Low Density Residential, it does allow for any other conditional use permits that may be appropriate to the area, deemed it does not have a significant effect. I can read you section 204F.
With conditional use permit, we're allowing commercial property on a low-density residential lot.
That certainly appears to be what is allowed just about in any zoning district. It allows for a minimal impact type of commercial use as a conditional use on, on properties, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Few folks will, let the lady have the microphone, please. Identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Whiteman. I live at 23744 Lowden Mountain Court, and my husband and I own the property that's within 500 feet of this district proposed area. So the first thing I, question I have is based upon this discussion here about the trail, because if I look at what I see as a property boundary line for the Forest Service, it does not come clear up to Lowden Mountain Court. So my question is, maybe I have the boundaries incorrect from what I, I can tell there, or to me, they're also going to need permission from a private landowner to continue the trail to gain, so they will be straight across from Lowden Mountain Court. Otherwise, they're going to have to drive also a little bit on Deerfield Road, which again brings up the safety concern.
Can anyone answer that question?
It's Forest Service. The first structure, the first landowner is the cabin below Lake, the new cabin, and at the end of their property, that is Forest Service all the way. And there's a strip of Forest Service that runs for over a mile, up 250 feet wide in some places.
Can we be shown that?
I have a pointer. This is Forest Service right here. This is all Forest Service. This is private property, so it does appear, you know, if the right of way does go along here, so if they go right here, it's, they'll be going mainly across the right of way in Forest Service, and it certainly appears from this picture that it would be crossing private property.
Would they be crossing private property in the right of way, though, or actually on the private property?
It's an access easement. Right? Lowden Mountain Court Road and the road to the cabin below, New Lake line up, and that's also where we would access. So our trail would end at Deer Drive Way.
I know.
If you get a better picture, if you zoom in a little.
Dan, while you're trying to pull that up, I'll just ask you a question, and then eventually you can answer it. You, you had mentioned just a minute ago that the conditional use permit process for a low-density residential district allows for a commercial operation in there with a conditional use permit? Because this application was a conditional use permit for a home occupation.
Yeah, that's the way it's in the heading. It is in the heading that way, but it certainly could be looked at the other way also.
Which would, and the other way would be what?
Just as a conditional use.
As a commercial operation.
For the bicycle rental facility, is what you can, you would, you would basically say it's a conditional use permit for a bicycle place, not, you don't necessarily have to say it's a commercial operation. It certainly is in the commercial operation.
If it wasn't a commercial operation, he wouldn't need a conditional use permit, would he?
Well, it's not a typical use as a conditional use, and it's not listed under the allowed uses under conditional uses, but even under Low Density Residential, it does state that other uses may be allowed.
So, so let me ask you this, if, if this gentleman was wanting to just let people, he had a, he had a blue bike program that says, you can come up and borrow one of my blue bikes to get on the Mickelson Trail, and I'm not charging anybody, just stop by and pick up a bike, would he need a conditional use permit for that?
If he was just letting them use it?
Yeah.
No.
So this is, so the conditional use permit is for a commercial operation in a low-density residential?
Yes.
Jake, can you enlighten us a little?
I don't know if the commission has, you know, I've got the actual zoning ordinance that lays out the different conditional uses for low, low-density residential. I don't know if you have that in front of you.
I didn't bring it in with me, I got it out here, I can stop and get it.
I can.
There's the conditional uses, and then there's 18 conditional uses for low-density.
Because.
But Dan, it may already be clear to you, but what Dan was, was saying is that in the ordinance, in the ordinance, it says that there's listed conditional uses, but that list is not exhaustive, they're just illustrative of the type that can be considered. You could add 19 through 100 on that list, I mean, that's, so those give you an idea of the kind of uses that are conditional.
Right here, too.
But that's, that's also listed, the end of this, right here.
It wouldn't be a neighborhood?
No.
Because that was my problem with this during, and I said on the planning commission when this thing came up, and that was my problem with it at the time, because it just didn't seem to fit a home occupation. And, and so that's why I opposed it initially, was because it just doesn't fit the home occupation. But then, I don't know, if you can point out, I guess where, I'm, I'm looking here, and one of them is a neighborhood commercial use, as reg, regulated in section 302. What is that?
Neighborhood commercial use is a use that is usually, serves the neighborhood.
Well, this isn't it.
No.
That wouldn't fit that. So tell me, under items one through 18, what, which one would that, would we say that this covers?
Well, I guess what I was going by was under C, it says, the following uses are illustrative of those which may, the board may approve. Other uses may be allowed, provided they are not found to be contrary to the intended uses of the district under consideration. So, I mean, you could certainly make, this is a low-impact use, you know, any home occupation, if they have people coming and going to the property, certainly could have a use, parking, people on the property.
So, so Dan, I, I go back to my comment earlier about anyone who's running a business is going to want to improve the amount of business they have if they're a good business person. I, I don't see where they're going to be able to expand parking, I, I mean, what happens then? How is that dealt with?
Well, that's certainly why it's a conditional use permit. You can put conditions on it, limiting the expansion on the property. If it goes beyond above the expansion, you can certainly put conditions on it that it cannot go above and beyond what he's been allowed to given, or given to do.
So really, what we're discussing is a conditional use permit for this operation, which doesn't have a.
It's not listed under our conditional use permits?
Yep.
But not everything that you would approve as a conditional use permit is listed under here. You can certainly allow other uses, as long as you find it not to be contrary to the intended uses of that zoning district.
So can somebody tell me how would not be contrary to the intended use of, of a suburban residential area?
Well, this is low-density residential, which is three acre lots.
I'm sorry.
You know, it's not a, a use that has heavy commercial type use, it has traffic coming and going up to, he says, 415, which would be, if you averaged it out, it'd be four, on average, of four people coming and going to the property on the average per day.
You have the floor.
Yeah, I, I understand that the area I live in is, is zoned, low-density residential. I said before the Planning and Zoning Commission that there were 20 vacation homes in the immediate area around my house. Sunday morning, my wife and I went for a drive, and we drove from west of the cemetery in Hill City to Tigerville Road, which is four and a half miles, and counted 43 vacation homes. More vacation homes than there are homes, unless you count the trailer houses in the trailer court. In the end of my driveway, people turn around on a daily basis in the summer that are lost looking for vacation homes. Probably 15 cars. The neighbors behind me are going to realize this this summer, they turn around in their driveway, because they're lost looking for one of these 43 vacation homes. And I don't see how you can say it's low-density residential. I don't know any of my neighbors anymore, other than the two directly east of me, one of which is the only person that this will impact. He doesn't care if I do it. And High Country Guest Ranch is going to generate a lot more traffic crossing Deerfield Road than I do. They cross Deerfield Road with horses. You can control a bicycle. I've been around horses, you can't always control a horse, and I don't, I don't see where, what I'm proposing is any different than what's already going on, on the first five miles of Deerfield Road. It is not low-density residential anymore. We don't know our neighbors. We don't know our neighbors anymore. Obviously, our neighbors are not too enthused about us, I guess. I don't know why. But what we're doing is no noise. I mean, I can't think of anything that would be lower impact. And if I read the zoning laws and stuff, I, I guess I would probably say it's probably touch and go, if it's a legal use or not. I don't know. But in light of what's going on in the neighborhood, I'm living right in the middle of forty-three vacation homes. And that's not counting the ones on Gold Mountain, not counting the ones at Marshall I brought some pictures, and I don't know if Dan can show them or not, but that area, Deerfield Road corridor, has changed so much in the last twenty years, that maybe, maybe the zoning needs to be looked at. You know, I don't know. You say a vacation home isn't commercial. Well, trans, big vacation home. Okay, here's an office for vacation rentals, right here. And you can just follow through. This is a vacation home. This is a cabin. Vacation home. Vacation home. Wade's Gold Mill. Mickelson Trail is right behind it, two more vacation homes. None of these pictures double up another vacation home. Another vacation home. Wade's Gold Mill, that's grandfathered in, it's legal, but it's commercial.
But, but you know, sir, that, I don't mean to interrupt you, but vacation rental homes is allowed in, in your zoning district. I mean, they're allowed with a conditional use permit. You're, you're, I mean, where I'm struggling with this is, it doesn't fit a home occupation, and so I'm trying to figure out where it does fit. Dan, if he rezoned that to highway service, then he'd be fine, right?
Yes.
But the problem with calling it highway service would be what?
It would be spot zoning, there's no other commercial, a, a, a commercial zone property in the area, other than if you go into Hill City.
So, so is there another zoning that he could go to that would fit? That has, you know, that, that, where we're, where we're allowing the outdoor concerts? What's that zoned as?
That's only planned unit development.
Okay. And he doesn't have enough property for a planned unit development?
We've done small PUDs. It's not a typical thing that really fits as a definition as a PUD, but we've done that. We recently did a PUD for a wedding reception area out on Nemo Row. That was one lot.
And that would allow him to do that? A PUD?
Certainly would be an option to go that way, yes.
And, and under our ordinance, then it, it would cover that kind of a business? In a planned unit development?
Go that direction and then have apply for a PUD. That is a three-month process. And it's, it's going to be advertised.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, was Commissioner Holloway correct when he said that in a, in a low-density residential, you need a, a conditional use to have a vacation home?
Yes, you do.
Do we have forty-three conditional uses down there?
A lot of those, our vacation home rentals are either planned unit development, because you can't have vacation rentals in a PUD. High Country Guest Ranch is a PUD. Loudon Mountain Court, just across the road, is a PUD. Tang Tran, the four vacation home rentals there is a PUD. There's other ones that are grandfathered in, they were in operation prior to the adoption of, before ninety-four. Other ones, yeah, they may be illegal, are were there prior to nineteen ninety-four also.
The ones that I counted, to my knowledge, are all legal vacation homes, with the exception of one, and I think Dan indicated this morning that that also is legal. Rodney and Shirley's, isn't that legal? So I guess, I guess my point is that it, it maybe doesn't just exactly fit what's in the book, but looking at the neighborhood, it fits perfectly. I mean, I'm going to be listening to, to the same music five nights a week at my place, from now until whenever, I don't know. And I didn't come down and complain about that. The house, the first house up the road from me, the first house below Newton Lake, I would like somebody to put a tape measure on the drain field, because the house shouldn't be there. And I had somebody come out from the Spring Creek study last year, because the suds in my creek were like that, and he took a picture of it and took samples, and I never heard another word about that. Well, that's something new. I used to have frogs in my creek. I don't have any frogs anymore. The area has changed. It's changed.
And frankly, I'm, I'm not opposed to your business, and, and I don't think it'll have a big impact on that neighborhood in, in, if it's operational. The different difficulty I had in the planning commission, the difficulty I'm having today with this, is that I don't think our ordinance allows for it, so I, I just have, that's where I'm hung up with it. So if there's a way to get it so that it would, so that the ordinance, you know, either in the planned unit development, or highway service, or something like that, then, then our ordinance would allow for it. And granted, you know, we can make exceptions to any one of these ordinances, I suppose, but once you start opening up the barn door of allowing home, home occupants, or home businesses, which is outside the home, then, then I, I don't know where you stop with that.
Well, where do you stop adding to a, a PUD? You approved this live music outdoor concerts five nights a week. That wasn't in the original planned unit development. That was added. I know you can make exceptions. And I think that this fits this neighborhood perfectly. We are one of two outfitters on the Mickelson Trail, one of the ten best trails in the United States, and it's an essential service. There are other people that are doing it that are not legal, but the Forest Service has really cracked down on them. In fact, at Rochford, there's a person renting bikes and running a shuttle service out of his home, has been doing it for however long trail's been open, and the Forest Service has cracked down on him, but he still rents bikes, he just quit shuttling. And I guess I could have attempted to do that, because on average day, I might have three cars come to my place, that I would give those folks a ride up to Dumont, and they would ride back. But the majority of what I do is trailhead to trailhead or end to end. There are skinny days in the summer that I'll go from Deadwood to Edgemont two times. One day, I went two and a half times. Never once was home. I was constantly on the road from, well, you can figure that out during tourist season, two and a half trips completely through the Black Hills. And have no time to be at home causing nobody any problems. What goes on at the house there is going to be a couple hours in the morning, and then they're on the trail. And, and you know, all these bikes are gonna, these bicycles are all going to come through here anyway. The trail is there, and they're all going to come through there, whether they get on Hill City, or where they get on. I mean, it's there, the trail is there.
But they wouldn't be crossing Deerfield Road at that point?
But that's already been looked at by the Highway Department. Game Fish and Parks, Forest Service have looked at that.
I read it.
I understand, I, it's a concern of mine. At first, I thought that we would have to go out of my driveway and actually ride on Deerfield Road, and the Forest Service said, no, they offered. They said, no, we'll grant you an access across that meadow. And then that made that trailhead identical to the Dumont trailhead.
No, I'm, I'm just gonna mention that the Forest Service's response, it didn't say anything about the safety. It said that you were a good outfitter and that, you know, they wanted to work with you. Nothing was said about safety. And, and same with Game Fish and Parks, you have a great reputation, and that's great, but they didn't address Deerfield Road, because that's really not their concern. Deerfield Road is a county concern.
This discussion about crossing Deerfield Road is interesting to me, because we have lots of bicycle riders on Lower Spring Creek Road. And they come from Hart Ranch, and they cross Highway seventy-nine. And sometimes it's not fun to meet them on the county highway.
Yeah, I know.
Because of a hay truck coming, or that sort of thing, but so far, we haven't run over anybody.
And we hope not, huh?
Well, I've been doing this since two thousand and five, and I've never had anyone hurt on a bicycle or in any, in any other way. I pay my insurance every year. You have to, that's why I'm a licensed outfitter.
I get that, but that is, it's a different thing this year. So, it's, it's nice to look back, and you've had that experience, and I'm glad, but this is different. It's setting up a precedent.
What you wish on this issue as a board?
I don't know.
I, I could also add that other home occupations have been added that aren't necessarily neighborhood commercial. We've had a gun stock business, ammo business, you know, and that isn't necessarily a neighborhood commercial either.
And I would add that one mistake does not make you liable for another one.
But Dan, aren't the gun stock and ammo, do they conduct that inside their, inside their residence?
A structure on the property, yes. Not necessarily the home, but an accessory structure.
Ma'am, do you wish to speak?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, so I just wanted to repeat that, you know, this area right here, in this vicinity, is not primarily vacation rental. You know, we are residentials there, we live there permanently, and we are the ones who are going to feel the greatest impact from this. Of course, we wish Mr. Pults a successful business. We just don't really want it in our residential area. We do feel that his business will look commercial. You know, he's already brought in three extra buildings, and the conditional use permit then says that he has to build this large parking lot that will have between six to ten cars. So, you know, it begins to look commercial. So from that aspect, we don't want to look at a commercial business, and we also don't want our property values lowered because of that. And then we also are very much concerned about the safety issue, because, you know, we just spent, you know, all the taxpayer dollars rerouting Mickelson Trail underneath Deerfield Road for safety reasons, and this reintroduces that issue. And then I wasn't quite, I didn't quite understand the staff report, when it said that the, the Highway Department had no comment on that. I don't know what that quite meant, Dan. I don't know if it meant that they didn't think there was any safety concerns crossing Deerfield Road, or if they just didn't make any comments.
They didn't make any comments.
Okay, so, so again, we don't have the Pennington County Highway Department's approval.
Or denial.
Or denial, absolutely, yes.
It's really unusual, too, because I, this is really one of the first times I've ever, ever seen him not respond. So I, did you call and find out why, or?
They, they actually sent a form back that said no comment.
Okay, it would have been better then to have had no comment there than none. Because all this time, I've been assuming they just didn't, and I didn't know if there was an issue, or?
They responded, they just responded, but no comment.
Okay.
I think if the Highway Department was supposed to be concerned about safety on every road, of every person going up and down the road or across it, we'd need a big staff.
Yes, sir.
This is very difficult, because I think it's a great business and, and needed out there. I've often thought, how, how do I get from one place to another? And now I know. And, and I know you're going to say that everyone has a right to use their property, probably, as they, they see fit. On the other hand, so do the other...
You read my mind.
So do the other residents who have purchased property there prior to this, and they have a right to use their property as they see fit, so. It's a tough question.
Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Sandy Frank, and my husband, Tom, and I live up on Loudon Mountain Court. And our objection to this conditional use request is not personal to Mr. Pults. Residents of our cul-de-sac have rented from his business in Hill City. We wish him every success in his business. We just don't believe that this is the appropriate site for it. Cheryl has mentioned in, in the appeal letter, the various zoning ordinances that we feel conflict with this request, but the safety issue is really paramount. The fact that the Highway Department, or the state, or whomever routed the other accesses to the trail that previously crossed Deerfield Road, they built those bridges over them so that there is no longer that crossover. And I'll keep my comments brief, but the fact that High Country is going to be having, admittedly, more traffic now, it was stated earlier, just adds to the potential risk for safety concerns on crossing Deerfield Road. And we, we thank you for your review of this appeal.
Okay, thank you. We're going to close this to commission discussion now, and Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to uphold the appeal, meaning denial of the conditional use permit.
Second.
We have a motion to deny the application. Is that the essence of it? The appeal is not written down.
The literal language in the ordinance says overrule, so your motion would be to overrule the Planning Commission's approval of the conditional use permit?
That would be just about what I said.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and is Secretary comfortable with the motion? Any further discussion by the commission? Hearing none?
Roll call vote.
We'll have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
No. Motion carried. Completes the Planning and Zoning Committee reports. Start with Commissioner Busker.
Well, I, I don't, I just have one more thing to say. I've talked to a couple of legislators, and, and, you know, without giving away all my, my beliefs, I, I questioned one of the senators on why they passed the Sentinel bill, and he said it was to give local governments more authority. So I questioned him as to why he thought that the local government should have authority over guns, but it took the state government to have authority over fireworks. And he didn't have an answer.
Commissioner Holloway?
I have nothing.
On Friday, the community health organization will begin to do some interviews of possible contractors to build their building. I don't know, are you? I, I know I've been invited to sit through those, simply because we've talked about a collaborative effort for our Health and Human Services, as well as community health. I don't know if they... Do you want to go?
No.
You could take two, and I'll take two. Anyway, I'll, I'll let you know how that comes out, what happens there.
Eventually, we're going to need to, if I may, eventually, we're going to need to then make a decision whether or not we're going to include...
then make a decision whether or not we're going to include Health and Human Services in on that project and how we set it all up.
Right.
I think the thought process with Commissioner Troutman and I was that we would probably discuss that through our Building Committee and then come back and make some kind of a presentation to the board so that the board can actually take some action on whether or not we want to go that route.
Okay, I think you've heard my committee report on the TIF discussion. Weeden Fest Board tomorrow, and so we'll proceed. Unless there's any further comment, we'll, we have items from the public. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Last meeting, I detected some frustration on the part of one of the commissioners about how he was treated to the folks in here and the lobbyists and so on and so forth on TIFs and prior to that on fireworks. And today, I detected, and maybe I'm wrong, detected a good amount of frustration on the part of the chairman relative to TIFs. Look in the mirror, folks. Look in the mirror. We, the citizens, are supposed to be the masters, not the servants. With that perspective, how frustrating to think it is to us. We are denied, in some cases even denied, the chance to speak, much less have one vote out of nine or one vote out of seven. I share your concern about TIFs. I share your concern about fireworks. I share your frustration, but our frustration goes deeper, and we're supposed to be the masters. We are supposed to be the masters. You folks are the servants. Holloway talks about the Rubber Stamp about third level down on TIFs. Look in the mirror. The Spring Creek Advisory Group's a Rubber Stamp about three levels down. Even worse is this thing proceeds through, you folks don't know some of the things that I know. I don't think you know that there's a Rubber Stamp for 319 projects in South Dakota. Last summer, I sat over at the School of Mines and listened to them on the teleconference. A guy got up, sat on the chair, and he was the chairman of the Rubber Stamp 319 Committee. And he praised what they were doing in Hill City. He probably doesn't even know where Spring Creek starts, but yet he got up and praised. So when that select committee on 319 projects recommends something, you can imagine the D and R, the Mineral, the Water and Natural Resource Committee, just Rubber Stamp, Rubber Stamp, Rubber Stamp. So please, all I'm saying is you folks, I sympathize, I empathize with you. But remember that we're supposed to be the masters. We're just shut out of the 319 stuff. If you don't want to hear us, you just shut us out. That's wrong. You may not like what we have to say. My philosophy from a young pup, young brown bar, and you saw some officers, I sat next to Lieutenant Colonel here, and I'll go out and see him one of these days. I mean, he seemed like a real... Anyway, my point is, anytime as a brown bar on up through the ranks, whenever I had a committee that I was assigned to, I always, always, when I'm away to get those with opposing views, the only way you can arrive at a good decision is to get opposing views. Rubber stamps don't work. I share your frustration. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing none, we will move on. Next item is, oh, excuse me. Next item is executive session. Do we have a motion?
Moving to executive session for personnel contractual.
Your second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Shouldn't come out of the executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jay, you're on.
Thank you. I would like the commission at this time to entertain a motion to authorize the Pennington County State's Attorney to commence litigation on behalf of Pennington County against the federal government slash Indian Health Services and any other relevant county in South Dakota in regard to the reimbursement of fees, costs, and expenses incurred by Pennington County as part of the process for emergency commitment of mentally ill persons who are not, or who are non-residents of Pennington County and further to authorize the Attorney General for the State of South Dakota to represent Pennington County at the request of the Pennington County State's Attorney in any such proceeding.
That would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have one more opportunity to make a motion. Would anyone care to do so?
Move to adjourn.
Thanks, Jay.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?